There at some point during the presentation from Tischler, I've got a couple of points and questions I need to ask. And so I don't want to, I just going to let you know whenever you think that'd be appropriate for me to do that. I don't know what the plan is, but I do have a couple of legal related questions I need to bring up to them.
Okay, fair ball. Maybe we'll kick off with that, John, if that's okay with you.
Sure, that's fine. Yeah.
They're the Tischler people are going to be here, be online, aren't they?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I thought. All right.
Hey, this is actually Ben Griffin with Tischler Vice. Just wanted to let y'all know that I'm on the line.
Thank you.
We've got Carl online too.
I got a question for Eric. If can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Yeah, it looks like looking at that like I'm not online. I'm like, it appears that I'm not.
Well, we can see and hear you in the meeting. If you tap on the screen, do you have an option to choose gallery view?
Yep, and I have, okay, and I just, I just clicked off the gallery view, but looking at the gallery view, it says that I'm not here, or at least my, my video is not here.
You need to start your video, it sounds like, and there's a down on the bottom left, if you're on full screen there, that'll give you that option to do that, I think.
Tell them about on the bottom right, maybe?
Yeah, he's on an iPad, so it might be a little different.
I'm sorry, I don't know, but.
Yeah, mine's on the top, right?
I click on the right, I click on that right screen and it says, um, there's no amount, I'm not here.
Well, can't you click on, you see the line through his video? I actually, I can ask him to start his video. Do you see it pop up now?
The host, okay. Yep, okay, now I'm there. I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to have a training session on the use of the iPad because this iPad is different than any iPad that we have or that I've used in the past. I seem to have a heck of a problem getting making contact in different areas where I want to go.
Okay, yeah, we'll get together and do that. Okay. I'll call toward the special work session for the Bella Vista City Council for Thursday, March 25th at 2:30 PM. The new business is a discussion of potential impact fee for Bella Vista. There were some attachments that were sent out by Wayne that are an impact fee study draft that's in a PDF format. And then there was also an overview of development impact fee studies and PowerPoint. And hopefully you all had a chance to go through it and John, I got to turn the proceedings over to you since you were the lead on this. I will mention that here in the conference room as well as Wayne and myself, Captain Cook is here representing the police department. Finance Director Elson is here and the Director of Community Services Doug Tap is also here. So.
Yeah, I think it might be good if we started with Ben Griffin from Tischler Vice. Maybe you could make a little bit, a little presentation for you. And then Jason Kelly indicated a couple of questions and I'm sure other people have questions as well. So Ben, you want to go ahead?
Sure, thank you. And thanks for all of you, you know, for having us today. We want to walk you through the draft impact fees. This presentation is a little different than probably what's in the packet. We made a couple of changes just, you know, to make the presentation flow a little bit better and then to draw your attention to, you know, a couple of slides. So we'll do a quick overview of methodologies. So when we're talking about impact fees, we basically look at methodologies as three points in time. So those we pass present future. So past, when we talk about that, it's going to be a cost recovery or a buy-in approach. And essentially what happens is, you know, you've oversized some sort of infrastructure. And so there's excess capacity available for future development to buy into or pay for their share of that. When we're looking at the present time, that's going to be the incremental expansion methodology. You may hear me calling it a consumption based. Essentially that is saying, hey, whatever we have today, we want to maintain that, that level of service going forward. So whether that is, you know, square feet of facilities per person or, you know, vehicles per person. Again, we just want to maintain that going forward. So that way, as you grow, you know, you maintain that existing level of service and you're not overcharging future development. And then the final methodology would be the plan based. So that one, we're looking to the future where you say, we have a plan to build a very specific type of infrastructure. We have very refined costs for that. But it's likely that will increase your level of service. So with a plan based option, there's going to be, you know, future development share that'll be recuperated through the impact fees. And there's also existing development share. And that's required because you're increasing that level of service. And so you want to make sure that you never charge impact fees based on a higher level of service than existing development receives. So that's why in a plan based approach, there's going to be a share that existing development has to pay. So are there any questions on the methodologies? Okay. So next up, we're looking at three components. So there's going to be a fire EMS component, a police component and a library component. And then you can see, you know, with each of these three, we're looking at a citywide service area. And then you can see towards the middle, we had that cost recovery, the incremental of the plan based, which tells you, you know, what we're doing for each actual component. So for example, in the fire EMS fees, we're looking at increment, incremental methodology for facilities and apparatus, but looking at a plan based approach for the training facility. And then what you see to the far right, that's the cost allocation. So that tells you, you know, for fire EMS, anything residential, we're going to allocate that to population. Anything that is non-residential, we're going to allocate that towards vehicle trips. And that's how we get that, you know, cost per person that we can then convert into a, you know, cost per housing unit. So any questions on the components or methodologies?
Well, I had a question for you, Ben. So when you're in the components and methodologies, obviously you've chosen different ones at different times. So how do you make the decision which component and methodology to use?
So if you have a plan to build a specific type of improvement, so the training facility is a good example. You know, that one, we're going to do plan based because there is a defined plan for that. Whereas your fire facilities, you know that you'll need additional space as you grow, but maybe you're not ready yet and maybe those, you know, those plans aren't as refined yet. So we can say, hey, based on, you know, the existing square footage of fire facilities, you know, we know that as we grow, we need to add some more. And so this is how much you should add based on that projected growth.
Okay.
You know what? I apologize. This is Doug Fowler and so this is like starting from scratch for me, right? I essentially understand what impact fees are and what they could do, et cetera. Um, and I do have, I'm going to call a gentleman that I can kind of tap into that has a lot of experience. He was a city council member in Bentonville for a period of time and how they implemented or, you know, what, yeah, I guess how they implemented, you know, impact fees they sourced. And so again, I just, just to let you know, I said, I'm kind of, I'm starting from scratch. So this is going to be a lot to take in. So whenever you say, do you have any questions? Do you understand? You know, I maybe, I'm probably not going to say a whole lot right now. I'm just like, I'm just like listening, you're taking some notes and I'm going to have to step away from this and kind of regather myself after this initial presentation. I did get it just like everyone else did, I don't know, was three or four days ago. Due to my own personal environment, I was only able to kind of flip through the draft impact funny, impact fee study. So I didn't get a chance to go through the PowerPoint presentation really, really to any detail. So you know, impact fees, we, so were we, I guess we were kind of like directional on this. We kind of gave you the heads up, what we thought we would like for you to look at and what we, what our spend would be if in fact, we decided to implement these fees. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I mean, were there any other considerations of how impact fees might be spent in Bella Vista? Other than fire EMS, police, library?
Yeah, there was discussion about streets, but from my understanding, you know, there aren't any recent traffic counts. And, you know, there's, there's not a, you know, GIS database of your existing infrastructure. It's a, you know, just the data that we would need to, you know, create a street fee just, you know, isn't there.
So I mean, at this, I mean, at this particular point, it's not to say that we couldn't maybe have some other considerations we might think about. Or are we just going to focus on fire EMS, police and library? That's where this is going and that's kind of the end of the story on what we're considering.
Doug, I can, I can maybe, the statute only allows us to use certain types of things. And so there's a list and I think, I think I emailed the statue to everybody, but I understand everybody's not an attorney and I don't expect, I certainly would expect questions and I'm going to help with that. But the, there's a list and of what types of public facilities. And so it's a pretty short list. I'll just read it to you. Some of them don't apply to us at all. You'll know why when I go through the list. Number one is water supply, treatment and distribution for domestic water or suppression of fires. Two wastewater treatment and sewage. Three stormwater drainage. Four roads, streets, sidewalks, highways and public transportation. Next is library. After that, parks, open space and recreation areas. Then we have public, police or public safety. Then fire protection and then finally ambulance or EMS. So those are the things that we can look at. If it's not one of those things, then it's really not going to fall under our authorizing statute. So if that, that helps, then. Yeah, we don't own a water system. We don't have a sewer system. We don't have public transportation. You know, we do have police, we do have fire, we do have streets. We do have a library and so.
So if you don't currently have something, you can't use these fees as a step toward developing one of those things. You, they have to be existing. Is that right?
You could. So let's say that you didn't have your own police department. And you said, you know what, we're going to have our own police department and we're going to build a station and we're going to buy some vehicles. You couldn't charge future development for all of that cost, but you could charge them for some. Because again, you don't have, say you don't have a police station and police vehicles, then existing development needs to pay for, you know, increasing that level of service. So the answer is technically, yes, you can charge for something you don't have. But generally, you're not going to generate much fee revenue because there is no existing level of service.
Okay.
So for, I, so for.
I've got a question.
That if you say, we wanted to go down the water road again and we wanted to look at impact fees, you might be able to get a little bit, but as you could tell, when we talked about this before, it wouldn't come close to being enough to pay for the whole thing, just like our guest said, so.
Understood. And you know, so this wouldn't be, you know, obviously it's one of the things that's in the back of my mind for sure. But I was thinking about wastewater as well. And I know we have a wastewater treatment facility here. I believe it's basically privately held. But our septic system is a huge conversation right now. And, you know, I'm just, I'm just kind of trying to like, think about broadening the conversation a little bit. I don't even know if it's the right thing to do right now. So it's like I told you just a few minutes ago, I'm very remedial on this, right? I've got some learning to do. And so I'm just kind of asking some questions just to, just to really fully understand the direction that impact fees could take, all encompassing, if you will. So anyway, you kind of answered some of my questions and I'll just sit back and listen some more.
I have a question. If we set this up for police, fire and library and somewhere down the road, we want to add, say like Doug's talking about the sewer or the water or whatever. Can that be done or does it have to go in with the initial ordinance?
Now, you could do another study and do a different one, Jim.
Okay.
I wanted to ask also, I'll confess to kind of being in the same position that Doug's in, really remedial and learning about this. But I am kind of surprised that we're on this, this slide here and we don't account for roads. And the reason I say that is because one of the costs that we have most directly associated with residential construction is building out the road access to that. We've had a policy where somebody can put a house on an undeveloped road and we'll go in and cover, we'll, we'll bring that road up to grade. And I don't think that's an improvement. I think, I think that's a capital investment, making a road where once there was a trail. And I'm surprised we don't account for roads in here.
I believe there's a legal reason as well, isn't there, Mr. Kelly?
I've got two points. After Mr. Griffin has an opportunity to present his, give his, his initial presentation. I've got two points I want to get into with them. One is about the library, library fee and the other is about streets. So I intend to ask some questions that might take us down that road. But so I, I was going to give Mr. Griffin a chance to kind of give his initial presentation and then I'm sure we'll be able to dig in at that point on that.
All right. And again, feel free to, you know, ask questions, you know, I do this every day, but you know, it's new to some of you. So, you know, I may, I may be, you know, describing something up here where I need to, you know, give a little bit more detail. So please just, you know, interrupt me with any questions and I'll back up a little further. You know, in a very simplistic form, impact fees are one-time payments for future development share of capital costs. So we're not talking operations and maintenance, you know, repair, rehab, refurbishing, anything like that. You know, it needs to be providing some sort of capacity for future development.
Well, I'm not sure the roads don't meet that criteria. It seems to me they do. I'm telling you, there's some of these places, you can barely see access and you call it a road. It's not a road. It's turf. And then we go in and we lay a base and we asphalt and complete that as a road. There wasn't a road there before the home was constructed. There is a road there during the construction of the home.
Right. I think we definitely at the end are going to go into a deeper discussion about roads because there are some, some issues with that. Essentially, it's a data issue before we can move forward with any sort of road fee.
I do apologize. That definition you just gave for impact fees, and I don't, I want to make sure I get this right. Did you say a one-time payment for increasing future capacity? Did I get that wrong? Is there something I missed there?
That's, that's generally correct. Yeah, it's a one-time payment for future developments.
Developments.
Capital costs.
Okay.
But I thought the first slide said cost recovery of previous investments.
Right. So there, if there's excess capacity, then you can buy into that excess capacity. There just has to be some sort of capacity related. All right. So we'll sort of move into the land use section where, you know, what I'm showing right here, these are the residential demand factors that we'll use. So this is actually census data. And so we've split this out where we're looking at single family and multifamily units in the city. And so based on census data, the average single family unit has an occupancy of 2.19 persons per housing unit. Multifamily would be 1.19 persons per housing unit. So when we get over to some of the fee schedules, whenever you see, you know, a single family fee, it'll show 2.19 persons per housing unit. We're going to use that to multiply that cost per person to come up with what the fee should be per single family unit. We also use these, these factors and the projections of housing units, because we're actually using population projections. And so we convert that to a housing unit projection, which I'll get to, you know, a little later. Again, these are the, the most important factors for the residential demand. So any questions on this slide?
Ben, could you define multifamily, please?
So multifamily is going to be anything that is on a lot with more than one unit.
Townhomes for this, for example.
Townhomes are generally considered single family because they have their own parcel of land underneath. But a duplex, so on a shared lot, that would be considered multifamily.
So that would also include, say, a 54 unit multi-story building that is basically a condo operation?
Yes. Yeah, basically apartments, condos. Those are going to be your multifamily units.
So I'm thinking specifically of counselors of places like the Plaza.
Ben Concordia.
We define multifamily in our code. We've got definitions for that in our code already. So.
Thank you.
All right. So on this slide, these are the non-residential demand factors. So what you're seeing at the top, we went to Ezra Business Analyst and pulled some data on, you know, existing employment in the city. So for 2020, the estimate was about 3,100 jobs. And what you're seeing to the right is that jobs per thousand square feet. So that's an Institute of Transportation Engineers multiplier. And so for, you know, commercial or retail development based on national surveys, generally you have about 2.34 jobs per thousand square feet of floor area or about 427 square feet per employee. So what you see over there to the right, you will see again in the, the fee schedules for library fees, because those we're going to assess per job. And so you will see that 2.34, the 1.63 and the 2.97 again. Basically, it's just a way of saying, all right, if we come up with a cost per job and you build 1,000 square feet of commercial development, well, we know that you're going to have on average 2.34 jobs. So we can come up with your impact fee based on these IT multipliers. What you see at the bottom, for police and fire fees, we actually use vehicle trips generated for each thousand square feet of floor area. So with this one, for commercial retail development, it's saying that for every thousand square feet of floor area, you're going to generate about 12 and a half vehicle trips per day. So you can see that a commercial development generates more trips than industrial or office. So the commercial fees, because they generate more trips and more demand for police and fire should have a higher fee than industrial or office. Ben, I'm, I'm an advocate. On the demand indicators. What was that?
I'm an advocate for keeping things as simple as possible. I'm surprised there's an abstraction here between just the population of Bella Vista to determine how much library space you need. Why, why are we abstracting it into jobs? What does a job have to do with libraries? I don't have a job perhaps, but I would love to make use of a library. Why tie it to jobs?
So for any non-residential development that happens in Bella Vista, they may use your library. And so the thought is, okay, well, we should charge them for the demand they place on your library system.
Also, given the registration card data we obtained from the the library, it seems as though that there's a significant enough proportion of non-residential persons using the libraries. So jobs is just.
Thanks, Carl. All right. So any other questions on the non-residential demand indicators? Okay. So next up, we have the actual development projections. So you'll see on the left side, the base year of 2021. So these numbers are important because we have to define the existing level of service. Again, to make sure that we're not charging future development for a higher level of service than existing development receives. So we've looked at the Northwest Arkansas Regional Planning Commission's transportation plan. And we use their 2020, 2030 and 2040 population projections to you know, define our population projections. And so what that is saying is, you know, over the next 10 years, you would see a population increase of about 8,600 persons in the city. And then we convert that increase in population to an increase in housing units. So that 8,600 population increase, that translates into about 4,000 additional housing units. So it's basically saying, you know, over the next 10 years, 4,000 housing units and then about 8,600 people in those additional housing units. For non-residential, we looked at census data and, you know, got recent employment growth rates for commercial, industrial and office. And so based on those recent growth rates and assuming that you grow in a similar way as you have in the past, you would generate about 1,500 additional jobs. And then those employment multipliers that we talked about on the previous slide, we can apply those to those additional jobs and then say, okay, well, if, and I'll go back a slide. If we have 427 square feet per employee and we're saying we would have 843 additional commercial employees, then that translates into about 360,000 additional square feet of commercial development over 10 years. So what this is saying is that, you know, based on recent employment growth, you can expect, you know, about 1,500 additional jobs and that translates into about 663,000 additional square feet of floor area. So are there any questions or comments about the development projections? Okay. Next up. Was that someone trying to speak?
I don't know if that's Larry trying to speak. Larry, if, we're having a hard time hearing you if you're trying to speak. Otherwise, you might want to mute.
Okay. All right. So this slide with the trip projections, we use these for fire and EMS. So really, it's the non-residential component at the bottom that's most important. Again, you know, we talked about the IT multipliers with, you know, how many trips are generated per thousand square feet of floor area. So we're just applying those multipliers to those, those non-residential demand projections from the previous slide. And so it's basically saying that, you know, over the next 10 years, we expect a non-residential vehicle trip increase of about 5,500 trips. So again, we use that in the fire EMS fees to allocate demand for future infrastructure. Finally, before we move into the fees, proportionate share, this is just a way to split demand between residential and non-residential development. So in the absence of, you know, police or fire calls for service, we've looked at, essentially, this is daytime population. And so we can, you know, allocate a certain amount of time to, you know, residents who, you know, live and work in the city. Residents who maybe live in the city but work elsewhere, and then inflow commuters. So based on this, we're saying that, you know, about 86% of your daytime population is actually residential development. And then the remaining 14% is non-residential development. So with police and fire, we're going to allocate 86% of demand to residential and 14% to non-residential. So any questions on the proportionate share?
Not a question, but a comment. Fundamentally, fundamentally for Bella Vista, we're doing everything we can to encourage commercial development here. I didn't see impact fees being necessary on the commercial side. We don't want any disincentive to, to stand in the way of commercial developers. We're disproportionately healthy in terms of residential development. That's where the growth in Bella Vista is coming from. I see our impact fees targeting residential, not commercial.
I don't think you can legally do that. Is that right, Mr. Kelly?
Well, I don't know of anyone that has done it that way. I'd have to look at the statute again. I mean, they're each, I think the problem, if you've got commercial and residential having an impact on fire, for example, I, I mean, and Ben may be able to help a little bit more with this. I mean, in order for the, for the fee to be correct, you'd have to calculate all the potential uses of it, would you not? And that would include residential and commercial.
That's correct.
I seem to remember, I seem to remember Carson at one point telling us in one of our sessions that you couldn't have one without the other, that you'd be discriminating and therefore you must have both. Is that correct, Ben?
That is correct. If, if there is demand for a service, then you need to charge all development types for that service. And I mean, even in this, you know, we do a lot of work in Arizona. And so in Arizona, they've even said, all right, if you want to charge a fee to one type of development, then you have to charge it to all. So in Arizona, we have to charge non-residential development park impact fees. Even though it's likely that, you know, the, the employees in those cities are actually using the parks, they're probably driving home and using the parks, you know, wherever they live. But it's a way to ensure that everyone pays their proportionate share of demand.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Basically, Steve, at the start of this project, the mayor and I said to Carson, buy something pretty similar to what you just said. And he told us that we had to, you know, charge both sides.
Okay.
All right. So we'll start with fire and EMS. So as I mentioned earlier, we're looking at a citywide service area. We're looking at three components. So the facilities and the apparatus, those will be incremental. So basically, what you have today, you just want to maintain that going forward. And then there is a plan-based option for the training facility. So basically, you're saying, hey, we want to build this. So what is future development share? What is existing development share? With these fees, we're allocating residential population and non-residential demand to vehicle trips. So what you're seeing at the top, this is your existing inventory. So you have about 23,000 square feet of fire facilities today. And assuming that it costs about $195 per square foot to construct, the value of your existing infrastructure is about four and a half million dollars. So what you're seeing towards the bottom, the level of service analysis, this is where we actually break all this out. So we're saying that your existing population is, you know, about 34,000 people that your non-residential development generates about 8,400 trips per day. And that the residential share of demand is 86%, the non-residential share is 14%. So right below that, the LOS or Level of Service, square feet per person, square feet per vehicle trip, we calculate that by saying, all right, you have 23,000 square feet and 86% of that is the residential share. And then we divide that by about, you know, 34,000 people. So what this is saying is that for fire facilities, your existing residents have about 0.58 square feet per person. So as you grow, we want to charge future development 0.58 square feet per person to maintain that existing level of service.
So Ben, we're in the midst right now of building a new Branchwood Station, which I think the square footage will be greater than 2,300 square feet. Chief Sims, what is the square footage of the new one?
About 7,800 square feet.
Okay. So that'll be open in October 1st, fingers crossed, Ben. So would it be more proper to use the 7,800 square feet as opposed to the 2,300?
Possibly.
Don't. Don't forget, Mayor, you're taking offline some fire there. You're replacing the old station. So you'd have to subtract that square feet out.
Okay. So you'd take 2,300 off the 7,800 then? That would make sense.
Which station are you closing?
Branch, well, we're not closing it. We're building a new Branchwood. And we're going to convert the existing Branchwood into a satellite for streets. But John's got a good point. You know, if, if we're taking 2,300 square feet out of service, would we put the difference in then between 2,300 and 7,800?
Add the difference on to 2,300.
I mean, what I would say is, if you're getting rid of, you're building a, an actual new facility, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So what I would do is say, we put in 7,800 because it's the new facility and then.
Did you get some out of that?
Steve, you got a view?
Yeah, I, I think we should use the 7,800 instead. But I do have a question. Do you have any debt on that station?
Yes, it's part of the bond.
Okay. In the 2020 sales and use tax?
Yes. Same as the fire training facility.
Okay. So we made an adjustment there, or we could have left it at 2,300. Because if you're doing an incremental methodology and you have debt on that, that new facility, then you would need to credit down some of that square footage. So we wouldn't be able to include all 7,800. But we'll look into this and make sure that we're, you know, doing everything. I know that we do have a credit for that sales and use tax bond included in the fee schedule for this. So I just want to dig a little bit deeper and make sure that, you know, that's what we're doing. I, I assume this is what, you know, Carson was doing by not including the expansion because there's debt related to it. But we'll double check that just to make sure.
Okay, thank you.
Right. So assuming those numbers on the previous slide hold, what we're doing here is, you know, we were showing the level of service at the top. And then we show each year going forward. So in 2021, our base year, we're showing you have 23,324 square feet. Well, based on 10 years of development projections, we're saying that you would need about 7,200 additional square feet of fire facilities to maintain your level of service. Which is, you know, a very similar number to the, the 7,800 square feet that you're building. So there are a couple of things we could do with that. I mean, if we need to recover some debt related to that, then we could actually just switch this to a plan-based. And you would recover most of the cost because we're showing, you know, need for about 7,200 square feet. So that's, again, something that we'll look into. But the way we're showing it today is, all right, if you need 7,200 square feet and it's $195 per square foot, then this would generate about $1.4 million in fee revenue for fire facilities.
Ben, again, we have had, excuse me, we've had some discussions internally with the fire department about a fire station number five down in the southwest area somewhere where we're seeing a lot of building right now because of the bypass. And I would suspect that would probably be about the same size as the new number three we're working on now. So about 7,800 square feet. Steve, if you're on the line, I think you may be muted. But I think we were talking about that over the next five to six years anymore.
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor. We need something in that south part of town. And it'd be similar to what we're building out in Branchwood.
Ben, can I ask you a question on the fire? One has come up in my mind. I'm, I'm Jason Kelly. I'm the attorney for the city, by the way. We haven't had a chance to meet, but. So when we, if we, help me think through this, because I'm just, say, we end up needing a new fire substation in another part of town because of growth in a part of town. Are we assuming that a new fire substation provides additional capacity to the entire city? Are you thinking about, we, we need to look at our response zones and terminate it would only be within the new response zone of new fire substation? Is that, how's that, how do you think about that?
Generally, you know, as you add additional fire stations, they can sort of help each other out on calls. So if, you know, there's a call on the east side of town and that fire station goes out, but then, you know, there's another fire very close to that fire station, then another one can respond. So we, we generally treat it as a network unless you're just geographically so far apart that, you know, there's just, you know, not enough response time. So I would say you're probably fine.
We're spread out geographically. I didn't know Steve can, Steve Sims can tell you, we do send our cars all over. So I did, I just wanted to see what you're kind of, what you're, how you, your base assumption, however you want to call it, in terms of whether it's a citywide benefit or a local area benefit. So thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Yeah. I mean, if you had a very specific development that you knew was going to need a fire station to service just it, so say you had a master plan community and, you know, you were going to have 4,000 housing units in it, so that was going to keep a fire station busy, then we could have a discussion about, okay, well, maybe it makes sense to have a service area just for this development. Because they're generally going to use up all the capacity of that station.
Thank you.
And I think as well, if I remember, Steve, if, if we got a bad fire and we're pulling from two, don't we try and pull equipment from the others and send it over to the, to the buildings that are actually answering the call so we at least have some coverage still left in that area?
We, we do that. We do what they call a, a station coverage where apparatus is moved from different stations. But we generally assign three stations to a, to a structure fire, whether it's residential or commercial. So we utilize three stations at one time when you move another station to the most central part of the town. That's generally how we do it.
So it makes sense then to look upon it as a total. Okay, good.
Yes, that's correct. Yes.
All right. So next up, we have apparatus. So we're showing that you have 25 apparatus today. And if you were to purchase all of those new today, it would cost about $5.2 million. So the weighted average cost of your existing fleet is about $209,000. So again, we're just allocating those 25 units to 86% to residential development, 14% to non-residential development. We divide that by the population of the vehicle trips. And so this is saying that, you know, for, for apparatus, you have 0.0006 apparatus per person. So as you grow, we want to make sure that future development is paying for 0.0006 apparatus. We multiply that level of service by the weighted average cost of 209,000. And so what this is saying is that each person, each new housing unit, each person should pay $130.42 for their share of a new apparatus. And based on, you know, 10 years of growth projections, you would need, you know, almost eight additional apparatus to maintain that existing level of service. So you would generate about $1.6 million used for the purchase of additional apparatus. Finally, the training facility. So this is a, it is plan-based. So what we're doing here is we're saying, hey, we've, we've got 4,800 square feet. And we know that if we build it today, it's going to be a little oversized. That way, you know, we can grow into it. So we're actually using 2045, which is the final year of debt payment on that 2020 bond. And so we're just saying, hey, we're going to spread this cost evenly over everyone. That way, we're not charging future development for a higher level of service than existing development receives. So again, we're allocating this 4,800 square feet of the planned training facility to all development in 2045. So about 57,000 people and about 31,000 vehicle trips. So essentially, each person should pay, you know, $14 for their share of this planned training facility. And what you're seeing here is, you know, by 2045, we've sized it where you use up all that 4,800 square feet of the facility. And so to make sure that, you know, we're not charging future development too much, this is saying in 2021, you should have about 2,600 square feet to service existing development. So what you see at the bottom is existing development share. So of this planned facility, existing development should pay about a half million dollars. The rest would be recovered through the impact fees. But we know that we have this bond, so we also want to provide a credit. And so what you see here is a way of making sure that, you know, that, and I think this is sales tax. So the sales tax generated by existing and future development, we want to make sure that, you know, they're not, you know, future development's not being charged twice. So once through the impact fee and once through their sales tax. So what we're doing is we're just providing an annual credit for that sales tax. And once we, you know, adjust it for the time value of money, we're saying that, you know, each person should receive a credit of about $49 and each vehicle trip should receive a credit of about $25. And that's just a way to offset the sales tax they're paying towards this debt and then the impact fee used towards the same infrastructure. And you see it here. So all these costs we've talked about, we just add those up. So each component, you know, the, the total cost per person is $208.80. The total cost per trip is $143.06. So we're just going to multiply those by these demand factors that we talked about a few slides back. So for example, a single-family unit has 2.19 persons per housing unit. We multiply that by $208.80, which is the cost per person. So a single-family So a single-family unit should pay four hundred and fifty-seven dollars for their share of growth-related fire infrastructure. Um, we do the same thing for the non-residential. We say a hundred and forty-three dollars and six cents per trip, multiplied by twelve point four six trips per thousand square feet. So for every thousand square feet of commercial development, the fire fee should be one thousand seven hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Ben, I have a question. I, I'd like to ask a question here. Uh, you're on, you're on to a topic I was, I was pondering a little bit and want to understand better. And that is, uh, our, our sales tax, uh, bond that is to finance our public safety facility and our additional fire station. And why wouldn't, uh, why wouldn't, uh, any of the impact fees we, we recover? Or i- if, if we move ahead with impact fees, why wouldn't any of those impact fees be able to apply towards the public safety facility and, and the fire station? To the extent that it's drawing down the, uh, the cost of, of the sales tax over time. Uh, whenever that bond gets paid back, this penny is going back to the residents of Bella Vista. They're, they're gonna be able to stop paying that sales tax presumably. Uh, that's, that's my hope for the future. But why wouldn't we be able to use impact fees to pay off some of that? That's, that's, that seems like if we didn't have the bond, that would be the, the kind of the quintessential capital investment that ought to be covered by impact fees.
Right, so the impact fees are being used towards that. Um, it's just we are providing a credit to offset any overlap. Because we don't want to get in a situation where you're charging someone twice for the same improvement. Uh, because then, you know, someone's gonna come in and, you know, they're gonna say, oh, hey, hold on, I'm, I'm gonna sue you. And you're not even able to charge impact fees anymore. So we want to make sure, especially, you know, a city having brand-new impact fees, that, you know, we cross every T, dot every I. And so again, we want to make sure we're not charging someone twice for the same improvement.
So, so somebody would be able to say, because I moved here and because I pay the extra penny on sales tax, and because I paid an impact fee, I have legal recourse against the city.
No, I think what, I think what is, the, the, what I would see it as being is that as, as a consequence of living here, we all bear the expense of living here. That includes paying the sales tax, which goes toward paying off this debt. It is only the additional impact they bring to the table by coming in that we are able to assess impact fees for. So if it's something everyone's gonna pay anyway, you really can't say they have an impact. Am I, Ben, am I saying that basically, um, am I getting there? Is that basically what you're trying to say?
Exactly. If you have a dedicated revenue source that's being used, um, to fund the same improvement that we're including in the impact fee, we, we've got to include a credit for that, so we're not charging twice.
Okay, then, then I'll write this off to kind of legal gyrations that have to be there. You guys, you guys know how it's gotta be set up so that down the road, it could stand up to challenge. And that's why you're doing the math this way.
Right.
Okay.
Alright, so, um, this slide just shows, um, you know, that over the next ten years, you know, we're projecting about, uh, you know, two point six million in revenue um, related to, uh, growth-related, uh, fire and EMS infrastructure. Uh, again, we, we know that there's gonna be existing development share on that training space. Uh, so, you know, the fees aren't gonna cover everything, um, but they'll cover a lot of it. So any questions on fire and EMS?
Ben, I've got a question on, and I think I'm looking at a, at the first, um, I don't think I have a current presentation, but is it, am I understanding correctly that because of the sales tax bond credit, you're assessing the rate for commercial? The impact fee for commercial would be zero on the fire and the police station new facilities, but not on the training complex for the fire?
So, um, I, I think there was a change this week to the sales tax calculation. Um, because, you know, if, if a resident, you know, goes online and purchases, you know, something, they're gonna pay sales tax. Uh, so we wanted to make sure that, you know, everyone got a credit for that. Whereas previously, we were just allocating that to commercial development, because that's, you know, the brick and mortar commercial is, you know, what's, um, you know, the collection of the actual, uh, sales tax. But, you know, because, uh, you do have a collection of online sales tax, um, we, we changed that to allocate it to everyone. That way, everyone receives a credit. Everyone's treated the same.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds like you're looking at the old chart, Gary. That's how it was. About a week ago, that's how it was.
Okay, yeah, I didn't know there was a new one.
May I express an observation here?
Sure.
Uh, obviously, the gentleman that's speaking is, uh, brilliant in this particular field, but I've got to subscribe to Mr. Bork's, uh, philosophy of simplicity. It sure does seem like we're going about a very difficult, uh, method of, of, uh, of obtaining what needs to be obtained.
And I would agree. Sometimes when there's debt related to an improvement, um, it does become difficult to make sure that, um, you're not overcharging future development. And I think this is one very good example.
Well, there has to be a methodology for arriving at the number. And I, I, I mean, I'm gonna have to go back and kind of go through this, you know, step by step and do the math on my own. But I, I do understand all the steps you're taking to get there. It's kind of painful, but I, I do understand them.
Alright, so any other questions on fire before we move on to police?
Another observation here, we are simply, we're simply trying to, um, increase, um, revenue in order to, um, to, um, handle the, um, expense of, uh, infrastructure that is created by new housing structures. Is that not correct?
Or, or all future development, yes.
So, um, Jason, uh, I know you, you sent out a memo regarding, um, the increase in, um, permit fees and the, the possibility of it still being considered an impact fee. Um, what is the issue? What is the problem with simply increasing our building permit fee rather than this, you know, obviously complicated method?
Jerry, we, we would, it would be much simpler if we didn't have to do all this. We're not doing it because it's preferred. But we've got this very detailed statute that talks about the very limited things you can charge for. It puts a requirement on us that we determine the, in our ordinance, what the formula is. We have to have some basis for that formula, the procedure, all that has to be very lined out in detail. And so that's the reason for, for this. Now, in terms of just the permit fees, this very same statute basically says, and there have been cases where, well, we're not gonna talk, call an impact fee, we're just gonna call it a water meter connection fee. And we're gonna charge six thousand dollars for every new tap. And that's gonna pay us back for, you know, because we're, we're getting many new connections. Well, the statute and the law would view that as an impact fee, and you better have gone back through this process before you do it. That's what got Elm Springs in trouble. I, I forwarded y'all here a couple of days ago, a lawsuit, uh, that was filed down in Washington, against Elm Springs, related to a sewer fee. And they did not meet these requirements. And so naming it something that else doesn't make it different than what it, how the law is gonna view that it is. So we can charge as a permit fee without going into this, reasonable cost to review the permit, uh, of, of, of those type of things. But if we're gonna say, well, because every new permit's gonna bring us all this new expense, we need to up those permits, then we're gonna have difficulty with this statute. So we're, we're not gonna be able to do that. If we think, we might think our permit fees are, are too low right now, because, you know, our actual cost of reviewing those and doing what we need to do to, 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 uh, inspect and all that kind of stuff is more than what we're charging, and we can up those fees for that. But that, uh, and, but that's gonna be based on that. These fees have to be based on the formulas and calculations that, that Ben's, uh, organization is presenting. And all a result of this state statute, which is very particular, and what we're trying, which they're trying to follow in presenting this study for us to be in compliance. Because let me, let me tell you, if we don't do this right, we do not want to be, let some lawyer sit out there five, six, seven years, let us collect a bunch of this money, and then come and turn around and sue us for an illegal exaction, demand that money be repaid and get a ton of attorney's fees. That's the consequence if we don't pass this fee correctly. So, uh, the stakes are somewhat high because these numbers get big. And so that's, that's why it's so detailed and so seemingly complicated. You're, that's about the best way I can tell you.
Well, I'm gonna say, I've known to say that I, I, uh, I got, I've got to agree with you because that's your opinion, and I value your opinion. But to say I, I understand where we're going, I don't really at this particular point, so.
Well, uh, this is John Flynn. To simplify things a little bit, uh, you know, you hire an outside expert in impact fees, and then they come back and tell you what you can charge for everything. And then you can either charge that amount or something less. Uh, you can't charge more. So you don't necessarily have to understand every little nuance of it, but you have to understand that part. At the end of the day, uh, you know, they come out with some numbers, and you charge that much or charge something less.
So, so if, um, if we adopt the, uh, the impact fee, uh, structure as it's being presented, does that, uh, does that keep us from being, uh, or does that give us a defense against being sued?
No, it potentially, well, if you do it the right way, your fee is gonna be defendable in court. It doesn't mean someone still might not try to sue us. Bentonville got sued over their fees. This, this tissue device, uh, did a very comprehensive, my understanding was, did a study for them and provided some very helpful information during that litigation, and Bentonville won that case. I, we can never, no lawyer can ever promise if we do this, we won't get sued. What I can say is, if we get sued because of this fee, because of the work we're doing here, we're gonna have a very good justifiable defense to any accusations and probably, hopefully gonna, uh, to prevent or to dissuade someone from trying to sue us about it.
Well, and, and the response to John, um, I think that's what I just said, John. I don't necessarily understand the, uh, the structure that we're discussing, but because of Jason's, uh, opinion, I respect his opinion, so therefore I'm, I'm going to, um, go along with, with his opinion at the moment.
Okay.
Okay, Ben, can we move on now?
We can. Uh, so with police, again, we're looking at a citywide service area. We're gonna look at two components. So a, uh, planned police facility and incremental expansion of your existing police vehicles. Um, we're gonna allocate residential demand to population and non-residential demand to vehicle trips. Uh, so, uh, it's our understanding there is, you know, a plan for a forty-six thousand square foot, uh, police facility. And that is being financed with the sales and use tax bond. Uh, so we're gonna allocate the cost of this forty-six thousand square foot facility to all development in twenty forty-five, the last year, uh, of the bond. Uh, and so what this is saying is that, uh, you know, future development should pay, you know, about two hundred and eighty-one dollars per person for their share of this station. And non-residential development should pay about eighty-four dollars per vehicle trip. What you see down here is twenty forty-five, the, the final year debt payment. We've made it to forty-six thousand square feet. So if we back up to today, you should have about twenty-five thousand square feet today. So that's existing development share. Um, that way, you know, they're paying to raise that level of service. That way, we're charging everyone the same. So what you see down at the bottom is, existing development share is about ten point four million dollars. So that's what you're gonna pay with the sales and use tax bond. Um, but your impact fees, um, we can justify, you know, spending about, or paying about eight point four million of this, uh, of that debt before we do the credit, um, for, uh, you know, that overlap. Uh, so again, about eight point four million dollars from growth-related fees and about ten million dollars from existing development share to pay for that planned police station. Uh, police vehicles, you have forty-five today. Um, and if you were to buy your entire fleet again today, it would be about two point seven million. So we're saying the average cost per vehicle is about fifty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, so based on ten years of growth, you would need fourteen additional vehicles, um, to maintain the existing level of service. And that translates into about, uh, eight hundred and, uh, twenty-nine thousand dollars. Um, just like we had in fire, uh, we're doing a, a credit for the revenue generated um, through sales tax for the sales and use tax bond. So our credit is going to be about two hundred and ten dollars per person and about a hundred and four dollars, uh, per vehicle trip. Uh, so what you see here is for police, we should charge about a hundred and thirty-eight dollars per person and about twenty-four dollars per trip. So again, a hundred and thirty-eight dollars times two point one nine persons per housing units means that a single-family unit should pay three hundred and two dollars for their share of growth-related, uh, police infrastructure. Um, commercial development should pay two hundred and ninety-eight dollars per thousand square feet of floor area for their share. Um, and then based on, um, you know, ten years of growth projections, um, we're saying, you know, about one point three million dollars generated, uh, towards this growth-related infrastructure over the next ten years. Again, we know that twenty forty-five is the last year of debt repayment. Uh, so because we're only projecting out ten years on revenues, uh, we know that there's additional revenue that will be generated by future developments. So any questions on the police fees before we move on to, uh, library?
Ben, it's Peter again. Uh, Captain Cook is advising that the actual square footage of the new building is forty-seven thousand, not forty-six.
Alright.
And I apologize, I just, just a real quick, I don't, this is a comment or a question. Another way, maybe you say, the, the credit for debt payments that you're applying, that, you know, that you're subtracting out, is that just another way of saying that if we didn't have any future growth at all in residential, you know, uh, housing or commercial, we would be paying that anyway as a city from the current residents. So you, you, so we're not applying what we would be paying anyway to future residents if we had no growth?
Right. Um, you're, you're crediting what future development is paying.
Right, so we have to subtract out what we would be paying anyway.
And if you weren't growing, you would not have an impact fee anyway, so, but yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so library, again, citywide service area, there are two components. There is the facilities component, which I want to talk to in a little bit more detail, uh, and then the actual collection. So your, your books, your, uh, um, you know, audiobooks, anything that, you know, someone goes into the library to check out, um, that's gonna be included in the collections. Um, with this, as Carl mentioned earlier, uh, we actually looked at, um, that the registration cards or your library cards. And so with this one, we're saying that ninety-two percent of demand for library services comes from residential development. The remaining eight percent, uh, is from non-residential development. So we're allocating more of the cost for libraries to residential than we would have under police and fire. Uh, so the library facilities, um, I want to talk about this one because there, there are a couple of issues. Um, so the city did not issue any debt related to the library. That was the actual foundation paid for it. So I, we may have an issue there, um, because it's not a city expense. And then the second issue is, um, it, it sounds like the foundation is actually going to, uh, finish paying that off within a few months. So potentially before you even adopt. Finish paying that off within a few months. So potentially before you even adopted fees. Um, so, you know, we don't think recovering the cost makes sense in this situation. If you wanted to say, hey, we have, you know, our library is sixty-four hundred square feet and we want to, you know, we want to expand that in the future. Then I think that is a better option, um, because if you say this is what we have today, there's no debt on it. But we know that as we grow, we need additional, then I think that would make more sense than trying to, uh, recover any debt.
Ben, I, let me, if I could, uh, this is one of the issues I wanted to bring up with you and, and this would be a good point, uh, and the facilities. Not only did we not incur the debt, we don't own the building. So the found and, and the, and the city does not operate the contract that, that does own the building. It's independently operated. So, uh, I, I think problematic to talk about the cost of the facilities. Does it really bears no taxpayer impact on the facilities at this? Uh, in terms of growth or existing, uh, citizens now. It could be, depending on what the plan is, that certainly the city has the authority or the. To build a building. So if the city decided they wanted to build this side library branch and put some books out there. In future that the city owned, then, uh, you know, obviously we're, we're, we're talking about a different thing that. If we're not, i- i- if we're going to even talk about expansion, finish an expansion. But if we're talking about even more expansion in the future. Uh, you know, that would, i- it would have to be done the way we've done it thus far with the, with the, uh, library foundation expanding its building. Or the city would sort of have to take ownership of that building either through donation or buying it from the foundation. I, I don't know there's any willingness to do that. But, uh, but before the city would incur, uh, expansion expenses. So we, we have the books. We have the furniture inside the building, uh, the staffing, of course, uh, the equipment, all that is city. Uh, in terms of, of that, but the facilities and I, so I, I wanted, I didn't know if that, all that was fully known to you, but. I think we're going to have, we'd have constitutional difficulty trying to use an impact fee to offset private debt. So I, I just don't think we can go there.
Yeah, I, I agree completely. I, I think it's best just to, uh, remove it. That way you don't have an issue of, you know, being sued in the future.
I, I thank you. I agree.
Okay. All right. So we'll skip ahead to collections. So, you know, this is saying that you have about forty-one thousand items, uh, in your existing collections. And that it would cost you about nine hundred thousand dollars, uh, to replace that, all that today. Um, and so what we're saying is, hey, that, that forty-one thousand, uh, you've got about, you know, one point one. Items per person, you've got about one per job. Um, so you multiply that by the weighted average cost. So every person should pay about twenty-four dollars for expanding library collections. Every, uh, additional job should pay about twenty-two dollars for the same thing. So what this is showing is over the next ten years. You would need to expand your collections by about eleven thousand units. Um, and based on a, a cost per unit of twenty-two dollars, uh, you would generate about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, that would go towards expanding your existing collections. Um, so if we remove the library fee, let's see. Then this slide changes to fifty-four dollars per single family unit. Twenty-seven per multifamily units, um, fifty-four dollars, uh, for every thousand square feet of commercial. Thirty-seven for industrial and sixty-eight for office. So any questions on library? Okay. Then the final slide, and I will give you those updated numbers. All right. So with the adjustment to library. Um, your single family total fee would be eight hundred and thirteen dollars. Multifamily is four hundred and forty, commercial is about twenty-one hundred dollars, industrial four hundred and fifty. And office is about eight hundred and eighty dollars. So as I wanted to lose to earlier, you could not charge more than this, but you could charge less. Uh, so, you know, we've seen some communities that say, you know what, we. Want to ease into impact fees. So maybe our first year we charge fifty percent. Our second year we charge seventy-five percent, our third year we charge one hundred percent. Uh, that way there's not as much of a shock, um, to the development community. Other communities say, look, this is, you know, this is the cost of development. You know, if we want growth to pay its way, you know, this is what they should charge. So again. You couldn't charge more than this, but you could definitely choose less. Uh, so any questions related to the fees we've already discussed before we talk about, uh, a potential street fee? Okay. So you want to talk about streets?
I will.
Go forward.
So with the streets, you know, as I said earlier, um, it sounds like we just don't have, um. You know, the data to say, hey, we have this many lane miles of arterials or, you know, major collectors today. And, you know, this is our, our capital plan to expand, um, our roadway network. Um, and then also just like, you know, trip counts on your network. So this is some things that we need in order to have a defensible street fee.
Well, Ben, we know how many miles we have. We know the number of streets as well. Um, when you say expand, do you mean add? New streets that are not in the plan today, not planted inside Bella Vista? For example, if we annex something and, and, and we decided that there was going to be a new subdivision. And there had to be streets. So that would be new streets that we don't have today. As opposed to, we have some streets. And I use that term very lightly that are more like cow paths or they're, they're growing over. So you can see them on the plats that the original developer put in there, but there are no homes. Maybe someday there might be. But at, at this point, mother nature is pretty much taking over. So if we appoint somebody brought up earlier, if a developer decided that he wanted to put a house in on one of these. But the road is impassable. Do we have the ability to charge impact fees to clear those roads that are impassable? Or because it's already planted, it is considered a road that exists and therefore you cannot use impact fees for that?
So I think there are a couple of things going on here. Um. So I guess my first question is, you know, is this a paved road?
Uh, it, it would be, it depending on the road, but the, I would say, and I wasn't here fifty years ago. I think you were, uh, Jim was, and I think you have a situation, you're correct. Uh, that you probably had gravel roads cut in with some ditches back fifty years ago. And they may or may not have been really heavily gravelled. And then, you know, they've been waiting for someone to buy a house down there and that no, no one has driven on them. No one has improved them. Uh, and so they've just all become back overgrown and they almost look like the forest again. But they have street signs and they are dedicated rights of way and they are technically city streets. And we leave them open so people can get to their lots, but I don't know that they could drive a car down it. They may have to horse a walk. But that's, that's the condition we're talking about on these roads.
They can only drive down them if they have a couch they need to get rid of.
Exactly. Or they, or they're with their girlfriend and they're on a Friday night.
Um, so, I mean, technically that road does have a defined level of capacity. So a gravel road or a dirt road. You know, it's going to be something like, probably not going to exceed, you know, a thousand vehicles per day. Um, just because, you know, it's unpaved. Um, now if you paved that road. And put in curbs and, you know, a turn lane, then now you can get maybe, you know, nine thousand vehicles. Through that per day. So you're adding capacity by paving it and adding the curbs. So technically, yes.
We could pave. I think the, the, the plan would be, and as we've done and what we've paid for. They come in, they have to basically rebuild the base and it's almost like laying a new road. Uh, Mike Button or Streets, they're in it and. Say what all they do. They come in, they asphalt pave it down to a, to a driveway for a new house. So, yeah, one of the, and this is the other point I wanted to bring up with you, Ben, is about the streets. And I know you're, you lack data and I can understand why you lack data to come up with a formula. But I'm sitting here thinking about this in terms of, can, is there a way? And, and I, this is my first go around with impact fees. So please, you're the expert on this. So. If, if you don't think there's something we can do here, then please speak up immediately. But. Could, can we not, as part of an impact fee, no matter what it is, be it fire or water sewer or what are any of those things we could do? The city could draw off zone and say, any new development in this zone. Would be subject to impact fee without, without making the rest of the city pay for it. Do you, do you agree that that's something the city could do?
That is, you can, you can define service areas.
All right. So, so, all right. So if we, if we take that line of thinking. And we say, all right, we're going to look at a map of the entire city of Bella Vista. And we know we've got segments of the city. Which would not necessarily be contiguous. But we've got sections of city that we can draw polygons around. That say, if you build residential in any of these zones. And these zones would particularly be where these roads are cow paths. Then you're going to owe an impact fee. For the increased capacity. And the increase and, and the, 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 the improvement will be just basically fixing the base and asphalt paving the road to the driveway. Then in terms of figuring out your data. You know that if it's a, if it's a home, you've already calculated how many people you think you live, live in the home. We already have ways of calculating trips per day. Based on that, and, and I don't, because we don't, we haven't put traffic counters on every street, but. Is, is there not some way using that kind of a, 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 a theory to back out a formula? And it, and, and, and try to get some data so that you could in turn justify that fee? Could that be done?
Did we lose Ben? I think we lost him. Carl, any idea?
I think, uh, Ben might have cut out, but, uh. Yes, yes, in theory, that, you know, if we had the data and we had. Um, some other, you know, elements, then we could actually, you know, make an accurate assessment as to what the. New developments sort of, uh, demand on those streets is.
One of the problems, one of the problems I see with this in theory is that we have. We have streets that this side will be built out, that'll be built out and it's a cow path in between. And so then they're not all dead in cul-de-sacs. So you, you might have a house go in and we think that's going to have an impact based on a formula to get build it out to that house. And then you have someone build in between and they're still in that zone, but the street's already been built, that built out there. But they would get the benefit of the pre-existing construction. Uh, it gets complicated and I'm just. Um, this is where y'all come in and if you're, I'll tell you this legally, I think there's probably a way to meet the definitions and. And get nexus and proportionality in terms of. Uh, you know, all that, all the preliminary constitutional language in the front of your report, which is I'm glad to see. But I, I just, I guess I'm thinking if we were very specific. Instead, these are the zones, if that in any way would help us back out data to be able to calculate.
Yes, that adding the service area into that equation becomes, makes that. Much more probable because say if we use the citywide as a service zone and if we treated these sort of, as you say, cow paths. As we thought they would be, Ben's also here, um.
Sorry, I, I lost my connection. Um, so I just figured I'd come into, uh, Carl's office. Um. All right. So. Individual service areas and, um, you know, used to upgrade those roads. So technically, yes, you can use impact fees, but it's only going to be for a portion of that improvement. Because again, you're upgrading, you're anything like rehab, replace, repair. Um, you know, you're increasing the level of service. So, um. But if we're technically using that fees.
If we're talking about nearly impassable road to a fully passable improved road. That segment, that portion, it gets bigger, does it not? It may be ninety percent.
Right.
Okay, rather than a hundred percent.
Right. But then you have to think, hey, we're going to allocate this cost and, you know, generally across the country, we see, you know, the, the cost per lane mile. You know, a million to two million dollars. So if you do a lane mile of improvements. And you're saying ninety percent of that cost is, you know, growth related. Well, do you have enough development? To fund that lane mile? Because, I mean, we could do a plan-based approach. And I've been this, you know, for other cities across the country and, you know. They have, you know, a moderate level of growth, but they have, you know, a high need. And, you know, I show them a fifteen thousand dollar street impact fee and their heads almost fall off. And, you know, that's potentially, you know, what's going to happen.
And plus we would, we would lose our discretion in whether the city wanted to even pay to improve those streets. Because once we assess that fee, it might, we, we might think, well, it's, you know, it's, it's not nearly enough to pay for, but we're going to be committed. Because these people are paying impact fees for that. And we may end up causing ourselves a little more of a problem. Now, if we're going to build it out anyway. Recouping a portion, you know, ninety percent of a portion would, might be very helpful, but. This is getting out of my range, out of my expertise. I don't know. I've been thinking about this because I, I know. That one of the first things we thought of as a city with these fees is, is something like these streets. I mean, that was almost first thing on the list. Was as, as a possibility. I definitely understand what you're saying. I get it. They're existing streets and, and so. But in a way, it's almost like having forty acres out there and the lots are drawn off and the right of ways drawn off, but there's nothing been done. And, uh, it, uh, it, and also I'll say this for the benefit of everyone listening. The more unique we get with this, the more likely we are to get sued for it. So I, you know, we'd be talking about, if we looked at a zoning approach to this, we might be looking at. Two hundred zones. Uh, you know, I don't know how many areas or how many streets we have of these little, little dots that may be. Half an acre around or some all like a Swiss cheese map or something. Um, and I, I just don't know. I, I've just been trying to rack my brain thinking of a way to keep. Keep it within the statute to keep us constitutional. But a- and then, you know, when you mentioned something about the data, I, I was thinking about how. If we did these zones, that might give you a way to in turn create some data to make a formula. So I, I don't know if I'm helping or not, but I was going to throw that out because I know it's a, something the city really wants to look at or did at one point.
Yeah. Um, and, you know, with streets, generally we look at like, you know, an arterial or a major collector. Um, you know, I, I don't know if I've ever done an impact fee study that has residential streets. Um, just because you want to make sure that whoever is paying the fee, um, receives a benefit. And so if someone pays a fee and, you know, they're two or three miles away. They may not go into that other residential area, but they're probably going to go, you know, on your commercial corridor. Um, they're going to go, you know, entrances to, you know, several neighborhoods. Um, so you want to look at those larger roads and base your impact fee on, you know, adding additional lanes to that. And really, you know, impact fees work better when you're saying, hey, you know what, we've got this, this two-lane road. And we know that we have three developments down here on the right side of the road and two on the left side of the road. We know that we've got to add two additional lanes because this has got to be a four-lane road. Impact fees work really well for that. Uh, so, I mean, yes, we could do street impact fees, but again. You know, we want to make sure we, you know, dot every I, cross every T. Uh, because again, we don't want you to get sued and also we don't want you to start collecting the fee. And then you don't have the, the local dollars to fund existing development share.
That's the question. Hey Ben?
Well, let me ask you, uh, yes, and, and I don't want to cut off street discussion, but how, how often do you recommend these fees be reevaluated?
Every three to five years.
We gotta spend it in seven, so I, I would think that's, that's your outside window. You gotta continuously be reevaluating that so you can keep, uh, you know, up with your projects and keep it current. So, okay.
You know, the way construction costs are going right now, like you've got a, you know, that, that three-year window becomes more important because you have, with the cost of lumber going up. You know, all of your planned projects, those costs are going to go up over the next few years. So again, you want to make sure that you're always keeping up with that inflation.
That, 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 that might be, this might be a nice segue, you know, kind of moving away from, unless, did Doug Tab have something he wanted to ask? Cause I saw him come over. Do you want to do that first? Yeah. Go ahead and do that, then I'll, then I'll, you want me to go ahead?
No, uh.
Hey Ben, this is Doug. I'm with community development. I was just wondering what your thoughts were on. Have you ever used stormwater drainage, um, upgrades and repairs in a impact, uh, with impact monies? Um, in any of your other experiences? We have thousands of culverts here under city streets. That uh, get clogged and damaged and broken and then cause damage to private property. Is that something you think we could use these funds for?
Cities and counties do use impact fees for storm drainage. But it, it's something that I don't like because it's harder to define what is existing developments share and what is future developments share? Because with stormwater, a lot of times you're fixing existing deficiencies. So it's a little harder to define that. And actually, um, uh, we're doing work in Kingman, Arizona right now. And, you know, when we started this, they were going to have a stormwater fee. And based on, you know, the types of projects they were including. Uh, we recommended that they actually don't do a stormwater impact fee, but they do a stormwater utility rate. And so like right now, I'm working on a rate study for them to say, hey, based on, you know, the existing development, the projected development, these planned projects. This is what you could charge per month to build those. And then you're not having to worry about, hey, what is fixing this existing development or this existing deficiency? What's actually growth related? You just say, these are our projects. We're going to charge everyone each month, generate some money. And that way, you know, each year we can do five hundred thousand or a million dollars worth of improvements. Um, but you're, it, it, when you switch to a utility rate. It's easier to, to do those improvements than it is with an impact fee.
Thank you.
Okay.
Council member Fowler, sir.
Yeah, so uh, you kind of like Jason, maybe that's a good segue to kind of. Cause the, the data, data collection, the data analytics and everything like that. Uh, you know, we kind of, you know, got our, got, got through that. The segue over to the collection of the impact fees, where are they housed, stored? And then how are they, how are they spent? You know, uh, would kind of be my, my next question.
Doug, the, the, the state statute says that the fees can be collected upon the issuance of certificate of occupancy. Or upon a closing of the property, upon the sale. So.
That's fine, but I mean, what bucket does it go into? How are they collected? They end it?
You're going to be creating, if you adopt this ordinance, and I sent you some draft order, but you're going to be creating a special bucket this money goes in. And you're going to be creating a special fund. And I'm sure Kerry would, could address this more fully, but it's going to be designated, it can only be used for certain things. It's going to be very highly tracked because you have to, you know, you, those monies can only be spent on those improvements. So um, there, there's a, there's a lot of accounting uh, that needs to be done on that. But you basically create a fund, a separate, uh, the, the, the statute itself even talks about, uh. It just says the revenues are, are deposited into a special account. To a special interest-bearing account, the interest earned on the money in the separate account shall be credited to the special fund and the funds deposited into the special account and the interest earned shall be expended only in accordance with the statute. And then you can't put any other money into that account. So it's, it's basically put in a separate bucket.
So we have to, when we have to like determine, and I, and, and you know what too? I don't, I, I saw the fee for, per home, obviously you just have to use a projected number of homes that we think will be built every year and say, well, this is the bucket we could potentially create, right? Or collect. Uh, so if we wanted to build that fifth fire station on the south side. To your point, after we did all the math, that might not be enough money to pay fully for that fire station, but it's designated for that. Is that right? And then you've got to figure out where you're going to come up with the balance.
That is, Ben just, Ben addressed that, but it's not going to pay a hundred percent.
Right, you're right.
Impact, we've got, we, we're going to have more need because of impact, but you've also got existing use. So you, you, and you can't charge the new people for a hundred percent of it. So it by definition, it's not going to meet a hundred percent of your expense. It's just not. You're going to have to come up with some out of pocket to meet some of these things anyway.
But we do have to develop a, a, a specific list of things that we would like to apply that money toward. You can't just, you know.
And so you've got, uh, you know, a level of service plan and part of that. You know, there, there's, there's discussion in the study itself about what else being considered. So yes, you do have to have uh, a statement as to what it is this money's going toward. You, on the front end, you do need to say that.
Yeah, and any of those that we have, uh, we've designated as, you know, incremental. Uh, so the fire facilities, the uh, police vehicles. Um, we're not saying you have to do a specific project because you could say, you know what? Right now, you say, well, we want to add fire station five, so we want to put money towards that. But you can have a development in two or three years that comes along that you weren't anticipating. And you say, you know what? It's going to put a lot of demand on this other station. So we would actually like to use some of our impact fee funds to add a bay to that fire station. And that's fine. With the incremental approach, it's not locking you into a specific project. It's saying you have to spend it on this type of improvement.
Okay, that's my question, question there. How, how locked and loaded do you need to be, right? Do you have the ability to?
You have to, you have to spend it on a project in seven years. So if you're thinking about growth in ten. It's going to have to be something that you're going to reasonably foresee occurring within seven years. Because if you don't spend it in seven years, you got to start refunding it.
Gotcha. Alright, okay.
Right, but again, every year you, you get a new seven to spend that. And so a lot of times what I'll tell people is, okay, you know what? You're approaching year seven, well, use your impact fees to buy some land. Or use your impact fees to do design work. And that way you're still moving towards that ultimate goal of building that fire station. But you're making sure that each year you spend before that, that seven is up.
Okay.
So you can stretch it over a little bit longer. Um, but you know, most of, most of that expense is probably going to happen within ten years. Because you can only buy land and do design work for so long before you actually need to start construction.
Steve, to your point, the uh, presentation's actually finished, by the way.
Oh, yes, that was the last slide.
Yeah.
Okay, does anybody have any more? There's an awful lot to digest here. Steve, did you want to say something?
I did, I did. I wanted to ask, uh, so in the presentation, I, I'm not sure where that last slide was, but uh. It seems like I was, I was kind of flipping through and looking for one that says, okay. If, if all of this that we've presented up to this point is acceptable and, and uh, and everybody understands that we want to move forward. That uh, the end result is this. That when uh, somebody uh, asks for a permit to build a new home in Bella Vista. Here's the charge uh, that would be associated with that. Is that, is that on that last slide?
Yeah, and Carl.
Uh, yeah, I may be able to pull it up.
Yeah.
Okay, so uh, two questions for me then, as we kind of contemplate the end here. And then I know we're not going to, we're not going to make any determinations on this today. We needed this really just to get all of our minds wrapped around, you know, how does, how do you, how do you formulate this? How do you structure it and what, what all goes into that? So thank you for that, but in the end. Uh, I'm curious to, to be sure about a couple of things. One is these impact fees. In my mind, the, the intent of the impact fee is to serve the existing residents of Bella Vista so that they don't have a disproportionate uh, uh, cost uh, associated with new development. Uh, if you don't have impact fees, it seems to me, uh, the, all of the city's infrastructure that has to be built out for the next home being built is uh, the burden of existing residents. And so I'm, I'm interested in impact fees to the extent that existing residents kind of get uh, the benefit of this. That's, that's what I'm looking for and I want it to be real, clear and understandable, not only for us, but for residents of Bella Vista.
Yeah, and, and that's something that's very common, you know, um, really what you're wanting, you want impact fees so growth can pay for itself. Or at least most of what it needs, uh, because you don't want to have to keep raising your property tax. Which puts more of that burden on existing development. Uh, and so impact fees are one way to reduce, um, you know, that, that property tax burden or, you know, any other sort of uh, revenue burden on existing development and move it to future development. Because if you didn't issue another building permit today. You probably wouldn't need to expand your fire station. You probably wouldn't need to expand your, your police fleet. Um, so it's really that growth from future development that's driving the need for additional.
Okay, and then uh, the question about uh, my, two more questions. One is the commercial development is tied to the size of the commercial development and the residential is not. And I'm really surprised at that. I'm surprised that a five thousand square foot home doesn't have a higher impact fee than a fifteen hundred square foot home. Is that common? Is that, is that the way you guys do it every time?
So that's a great point. Um, depending on where we are in the country, uh, sometimes we will do them by size of unit. Um, so a great example, you know, I, I'm doing an impact fee study in Miami right now. And um, you know, housing affordability is very important there. And so they do their, their fees by size of unit. And so we can say, hey, if, if you have a unit of eight hundred square feet or less. You know, you have about one person per unit. But when you get up to four or five thousand square feet, you know, you have more. And so if you do the fees by type of unit as we're showing, um, then smaller units are subsidizing the larger units. Uh, because we know that a single-family unit may have one person, it may have six people. And so if, if it averages out to two point one nine, again, those smaller units are technically subsidizing the larger ones. So we could do this by size of unit.
We could do residential, we could do residential. It's not greedy. It's, it's not greedy, Jim. That's not. It's not trying to get more money. It's trying to equitably re- uh, uh, set the impact fees according to the size of the impact. Has nothing to do with greed.
Yeah, we would, we'd have to look at a census data and then essentially what you do is you say, alright, well, you know, here, here are our housing units. Uh, here's the population in those, here's the number of bedrooms. And we tie the uh, you know, occupancy per bedroom together. And then we could say, okay, these smaller units. You know, they have fewer people. These larger units have more people. So really those larger units create more demand for services because on the residential side, it's the population that is creating the demand. So yeah, the, the larger units, um, if, you know, the data supports. That should pay, you know, more than a smaller unit.
Oh, is that something that you could look at, Ben, for us?
We could, yeah. Um, and we already have some of the census data. Um, so it's just, you know, pulling a little bit more data. One thing I do want to ask, um, when you pull, or when someone comes in and pulls a permit. A residential permit, are you um, documenting the, the square footage of those units?
Yes.
Because, I mean, we could use um, census data for the size thresholds, but if we have local data. That's always just better. So if we, you know, if we have five years' worth of permits. And we can say, okay, well, we know that a two-bedroom averages about twelve hundred square feet. A three-bedroom is about two thousand square feet and, you know, a four-bedroom is three thousand square feet. Then it's, it's always better to have that local data so we can adjust the census data, you know, a, a little bit better. Uh, so if, if that's something you could provide, just uh, you know, maybe three to five years' worth of permits. Um, with the type of units of single or multi, uh, the number of bedrooms and the square footage of that unit. Then we could get local size thresholds.
I don't know that we have it by bedrooms. The only thing we have, I think, is just the total square footage. And they would all be single. I don't think we have any multi units at all we've done in the last three to five years.
Okay, yeah, we could, uh, we could start with the census data. Um, because the census does break it down by uh, subregion. And I, I think Arkansas is lumped in with uh, Louisiana, Mississippi. Um, so you're not going to get, you know, a, a crazy shift like you would from like Texas and like a really urban area. Um, so I, I think the census data would, would be, you know, would be, you know, representative of, you know, what you would see. And of course, we would say, hey, the census data, you know, we're using says two bedrooms, yes, three bedrooms, yes. And if that doesn't sound right, um, then we can move on to, you know, looking at that public data.
Uh, Ben, I, I had a couple of comments. Uh, this is John Flynn. If we're talking, well, first, if you could send us updated data, because you changed the numbers there, uh, talking about the library. But if we're talking for a single-family home. The impact fee being eight hundred some dollars. And charging different sized houses, different amounts, if it's going to average out to eight hundred dollars. I, I don't think it's worth the trouble because that's a very, very modest impact fee. You know what I'm saying? If a big house is going to pay eleven hundred, a little house pay five hundred, I'm not sure it's worth all the math. That, that's, I gotta tell you, when you guys started out, uh. Uh, you know, I was a little more involved with some of the folks on city council. Uh, I'm very disappointed at the incredible shrinking impact fee. We were talking, uh, I was virtually guaranteed much higher numbers than what we're talking now. I mean, eight hundred dollars uh, impact fee for a house is, is very small. And uh, it's very disappointing to have zero on streets. It's uh, uh, you know, a week ago, the fee was fifteen hundred and now it's shrunk down to eight hundred or so. So it's, it's the incredible shrinking impact fee as far, as far as I can see.
What if, if, if you're building at the four hundred houses, even at eight hundred dollars, that's three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. I mean, that's pretty significant.
Yeah.
You roll that over year to year to year, I mean, that'll.
Yeah, it'll help some.
Structure.
Well, P Ridge is more than two thousand a house and Beckville's more than three thousand a house. So you know, eight hundred, I'm just saying eight hundred's not.
We don't have water.
Break the bank for any builders.
Yeah, we don't have water. We don't have wastewater and I don't even know where I am on this yet, quite frankly. But I understand it a lot better. Uh, when I say don't know where I am, how I feel about implementing them or not, but I say I'm, I'm, I've got much more clarity now than I did when we first started for sure.
I thought last week I might have heard something about um, maybe wanting to play with the uh, cost per square foot of the fire station. Uh, both the fire station and the fire training facility. I forget who might have said it, but somebody might have indicated that it was a little bit low so that would also have uh, an impact there, John.
Three to five hundred dollars per square foot across the country. Um, so that's something we could adjust.
So Chief Sims, have you got the price per square foot for those two projects? Steve?
Yeah, I was trying to get unmuted. Um, as of right now, do not have the price for square foot yet. As of right now, do not have the price for square foot yet, I'd be the one of them.
Okay.
So we're still working on that, I should have that soon, but the fire training facilities are until we get land, we can't do anything with that. I don't, it hadn't been priced out yet.
But for fire station number three, you know the square footage and you've got a GMP, can you use the? The division there to get a price per square foot?
You definitely know your max.
So Ben, Ben, we'll talk about this offline, but I, I suspected. It might be a bit of chainsaw math, but we do have a GMP, a guaranteed maximum price for that, that station. I'm sorry, go ahead, Steve.
It's about three hundred and twenty-five dollars a square foot, roughly.
Okay. And, and the captain says that they're looking for, or they're looking at three hundred and ninety-five dollars a square foot for the police station.
Okay. I think it was uh, four or five in the presentation, so we'll adjust that down.
Okay.
All right, Ben, would you mind taking a shot at Councilmember Flynn's question about how, how did we start off thinking? Uh, there was a higher number, is this, is this just the? The result of the process of going through and trying to filtering exactly what are the costs that we have that are, are. Coverable by impact fees, is that how we got down to?
Yeah, as you have, you know, more discussions, you start pulling out things that, you know, don't make sense. Um, you know, when we make the adjustment for the fire facilities, of course going, you know. From one ninety-five to twenty-five, that's going to bump the fee back up and it could offset that decrease that we had on the library fee. Um, but yeah, it's, you know, part of the reason that we wanted to, you had this discussion today is. So everyone can look at, you know, the cost factors that, you know, we're including to make sure that we're actually using the correct factors.
And one of the reasons that it used to be so high is that. Commercial was getting credited all the debt service from the uh, sales and use tax bonds, so their. Uh, fee was zero, but everybody else's was a lot higher, because they weren't receiving that two hundred dollars per person credit.
You know, we just had, we just had the highest uh, uh, number of, of housing permits. Issued in the history of Bela Vista, in the recent history of Bela Vista, last year, four hundred new housing permits. And our projections call for that to be the average over the next ten years. I'm not sure that's sustainable, I'm not sure it's uh, uh, that there's even uh. An adequate number of lots to have an additional uh, four thousand homes. Uh, but what are the consequences if our projections are, are off?
That's a great question, so any of the incremental components, it, it doesn't matter, with those, you can grow by fifty thousand. Units, you could grow by two units, it's not going to change the fee, because. With those, it's just maintaining that level of service, so if you grow more, you just generate more fee revenue, but the base fee amount stays the same. With anything that's plan based for cost recovery. Um, if you don't grow as quickly. So if you don't make those, those targets, so if you don't make four thousand units. Um, so you make three thousand, well, then you're only collecting seventy-five percent of the revenue that we said, and. If it's plan based, and that means you as a city have to come up with that difference. And you are already saying, hey, we know we've got existing development share, so now we've got another, you know, twenty-five percent to add on. To, you know, the general fund, uh, if it is uh, cost recovery, it's the same thing, you're not going to generate as much revenue. But with cost recovery, it's all related to that sales and use tax, so it's not as much of an issue, because. You're, you're still generating sales tax to, to make that debt payment. It's just, you don't have as much impact fee revenue. To offset that, but uh, yeah, it's, it's more of an issue for cost recovery or plan based.
I guess it's another, it's another reason we're visiting it every three years as well.
Exactly.
Things change.
Right.
Okay, this has been a really good discussion, um, I thank Ben and Carl and all members of staff and council. Um, Ben Dugtap has left the room, but I, I'll still ask him to send you the last five years of the residential permits. That we have. Um, and we'll look forward to seeing the new data. Councilmembers, um, so we don't inundate Ben and Carl with individual questions. I would ask that you flow them through uh, Councilmember Flynn, please, as he's the point person for us. Um, and John, if you wouldn't mind collecting those and then you could uh, send them over to the fellows that at Tishler Bice. And then we can get some answers.
Okay, sure.
Okay, and even if it's um. It doesn't have to be related to the numbers that you see today, but you have a, a question, because it, this is complicated, this isn't easy. And so if it's a, if it's more of a fundamental problem of how does this work? Uh, related to whatever, that's still a great question to ask. So at this point, all questions should be asked. So that we know what we're talking about when we next meet again, and we can try and get our heads around this, that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, and probably that is going to be my question is, what is the next step? When are, when are we going to talk about this? Because today, to me, this was just about absorbing, you know. Kind of what the, what the process is, what it's all about, what we can, cannot do, how the methodology for determining, et cetera. Running really about debate whether we should or should not.
Right.
And so that's going to be, you know, not even probably like our next gathering, so. You know, when is that going to be and then determining what that conversation is going to look like?
So Ben and Carl, based on your experience dealing with other cities, who I'm sure are novices the same as us. What is the next step or steps that we have to look forward to?
Uh, so, you know, we'll, we'll make some revisions based on the discussion today. Um, you know, we'll, we'll go back and look at, um. We can at least see what the, the size thresholds would look like. Uh, because we can always, you know, within our model, have it by, you know, single or multi family and then right below that. You know, by size, so it, you know, doesn't really change anything for us, it's all in the same model. Um, and that way we can at least show it to you and say, hey, this is what the fees would be if you went by size of unit. Um, but mainly it's, you know, getting these cost factors updated. Um, yeah, I think we need to look at the, the fire facilities component again. Um, to make sure that, you know, we're looking at everything um, correctly, so. You know, I would say probably have a, a similar type meeting uh, sometime in April. Uh, just to, you know, go over all the changes that have happened based on, you know, today's discussion. And then, once everyone feels comfortable with, you know, all the assumptions, the costs, the projections. Uh, at that point, then we say, okay, now we're going to schedule an actual, you know, a, a public hearing. Um, and, you know, let stakeholders come in, the development community, uh, community members, uh, you know, have their voice heard. Uh, but yeah, I would say we probably need another, uh, you know, work session before that actually happens.
Jerry? Should we do that in our normal April work session, or should we try to get in front of that?
Oh. I'm going to leave the timing up to Ben and Carl, but I, I suspect we want to have a separate session.
Yeah.
Regardless of the timing, just to zero in on this.
Okay.
Cause um, it is so complicated and we've already, you know, spent two hours, we wouldn't be able to. Address anything else, so if that's okay, I think, think if we handle it separately on the side, it'd be better. Jerry, you had a question? Jerry, you're muted.
How'd I get muted?
Um, okay, there you go.
I, I just got a quick question of Councilman Rosnak, um, at the beginning of this, he made a statement, he was just going to uh. Listen and observe, I'd like to hear what his um, evaluation of the matter is.
Sometimes silence is golden. You guys ask a lot of questions, I absorb a lot of information.
And uh, and.
If I have a real problem, you will know.
I just wondered what your evaluation of the situation was, um, from what you've heard.
I just, you know, want to make sure the fees aren't so high, we scare people away. And we don't get too cute with them. You know, we're depending a lot on this sales tax stuff being, staying like it is, we're hoping that the home building staying like it is. You know, you listen to the, the federal government and what could be coming down the road, there's a lot of different factors that could play a lot of games. With what we're trying to do.
A lot of hopes involved.
Yeah, you, you have to have faith, but we're nowhere near finished with this. And like I said, silence is golden. Sometimes you open your mouth and uh, you don't sound so intelligent.
Good point.
Alrighty, well, let's call it an evening then or an afternoon. And my thanks again, we'll look forward to uh, Ben and Carl to seeing the new data. And um, as I say, council members, please, nothing is, is a stupid question. You know, when it comes to something as complex as this, so just funnel everything through John, if you would please, and uh. And we'll take it away, that's not a FOIA thing, uh, Mr. Kelly?
Well, I mean, if, if it's just information gathering, I, I guess technically not, it. It might be better to send it all to Wayne and Wayne send it to John or, you know, but.
Okay.
You know, ticky lawyer, I, you know, don't talk to one another if you just. You know, here, send this to them, that kind of thing, I, you know, I don't advocate it, but. I'm not going to scream and shout up and down about it, so.
Okay, well, John, if you see anything that you think could be FOIA, because you're an attorney. Uh, then we can change the rubbing and, and do it through Wayne.
Okay, yeah, I, I think it'll work fine, and I would like to thank all the folks on city council for their uh, participation. I really appreciate what good attendance we always have.
Yeah, me too. Okay, everyone, I think we're going to get better weather tomorrow, yay! Good night, see you soon.
Great, thank you.